Okay, I'll call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. Time is 7:02. Please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Jiza.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. Before we go any further, Mr. Malina, I believe you have an announcement for us.
Yes. So for members of the public as well as the village board members and staff, under recent amendments to the Open Meetings Act, remote or virtual meetings are allowed as long as there is a gubernatorial declaration of a state of emergency, which there is currently one, and there has been in a series that began in mid-March, and also conditioned on the village president Salz finding that an in-person meeting would be either impractical or not in the interest of public health, and he has determined that both those conditions are present. And so the meeting is being held virtually with members of the public being able to participate through email, in writing through US Mail, or virtually through the Zoom platform. And in my opinion, those conditions have all been met, and the meeting can be held virtually. And we do have a quorum, so back to you, President Salz.
Thank you very much. Welcome everyone who is joining us on this Zoom call. We do have a number of people joining us this evening for discussion. We're going to try to do this as efficiently as we can via Zoom. If you would like to speak during public comment, which is going to be held after the presentation we're going to hear first, I do need to be able to see you on screen, so you would need to activate your video. And if you want, if you would like to speak, I would ask that you physically raise your hand so that I can see you, and then I will call on you. In the event that my screen gets over-pupulated and I can't see everyone, I will ask you to use the chat feature to just send everyone a chat message saying that you're in queue and would like to speak, and I'll call on you in order that's received. But first up this evening, we are going to move on past the Pledge of Allegiance for obvious reasons, since we're all meeting remotely. And first up is presentations and public comment. And we have a presentation this evening by Mr. Jeff Zucker of the Army Corps of Engineers, an update on the Groveland Avenue levy project. Mr. Zucker, welcome. Look forward to your presentation.
You, President Salz, appreciate the opportunity to come before the board again and give an update on what we've been doing with Groveland Avenue Levy Project. All right, so what are we going to cover tonight? And this slide just shows, we're going to go over the proposed levy. We've had a lot of discussions about the modeling previously, and we've had some time to go out and look at what a design would best look like in this area. We have a couple of options to consider tonight, to at least put before you as a consideration. Also, we'll go over the flood wall examples that we've shown. I have a few other considerations. I'll give an overview of the project costs, a funding update, and what has been spent so far, along with the proposed revised schedule, and then we'll have some chance for questions at the end. So next slide, please. I believe this is a picture that we've shown before, but just wanted to go over, since it's been a while, exactly what the features are that had been proposed. This yellow and green line that we've shown here, this is the current alignment that has been proposed for many ti- for a while now. It was part of the Upper Displanes Phase 2 project, and this is the proposed design features to add sheet pile to the existing Groveland levy in the green area that would raise the height of that area by approximately two feet. The flood wall that would then be south of Forest Avenue, it would be at elevation 618. It's about 700 linear feet of flood wall. It includes a closure structure for Forest Avenue itself. And then we've also looked at flood wall along Park there to the north. That was at the request of the board previously. That had originally been suggested as a road raise where we would just physically raise the level of the road. But having looked at the request of the board to look at a flood wall, we think that that's definitely manageable and presents a much better project overall. So next slide. I guess that one more click. There we go. Yeah. Oh, yeah. So this is kind of the more detailed look at the alignment of the flood wall itself. And this is the area south of Forest Avenue. This is the area where we were most concerned with where the flood wall would end up being aligned with the property that is there. And so this alignment here is putting the flood wall on the very edge of all of the properties along West Avenue. So all these properties have an ending boundary near the river, and this flood wall alignment is right on that property line at the very edge of their properties. So the flood wall itself is getting fairly close to the river in several locations, and you can see this bottom box down at the bottom shows the elevation, current elevation of the land as the squiggly line that moves around, and then the flood wall itself at the top. This flood wall represents something in the neighborhood of about three to 10 feet, three to, I guess, take that back, three to about 11 feet in height above the current ground level. Most of that is in the five to seven foot range, as you can see from the height difference in the land. We do follow very closely to the river, and there's a few places that dips off quite a bit, and so we get a much higher flood wall in certain locations. That does, that line there does represent the 618, and this again follows the back edge of the property line of the homes along West Avenue. The next slide. We wanted to take a look at if there was a way to possibly minimize some of the height of the wall in people's backyards. And so we decided, well, let's take a look at what we could do in terms of moving that wall a little bit further in, but hopefully not being quite as imposing of a wall in terms of height in people's backyards. The terrain in the area where we move this, where we see the greatest benefit is there at the very end as you get closest to the railroad. So on the far left over here, you see that that 11-foot jump that we saw in the previous one is no longer there, and it's more along the three-foot height. However, we don't gain much else further along the flood wall at all. It still is a five to seven-foot wall in most locations. So don't gain a lot of change. In fact, the alignment as we go from that point in the middle there, there's a, if you go up a little bit with the arrow, go up into the, yeah, there's a little line going out into the river there. From that point to the left is what changed, and from to the right, nothing changed at all from the previous slide. So only that part headed towards the railroad from that line there, from between those two lines, that's the part that changed alignment slightly. And so we did find there's a little bit of difference, but it's not a huge difference in a lot of the backyards. You know, we still have a wall that's four and a half to five feet tall in most cases, and up to seven feet in other locations. All right, so next slide. So what we did is we went out and we took some pictures in the area, and we tried to kind of do what we call superimpose a wall on those pictures to kind of show what it might look like if you were to see it constructed in the future. And these aren't exactly to scale. Some of this doesn't have exact scale to it, but it kind of gives you an idea of what it might look like. So this is a picture taken from the far side of Forest Avenue looking at the backside of the properties along West Avenue. And that gray line there in the middle of the picture is what would possibly be what a wall might look like. The color of that gray is just a gray that we had out of Photoshop that kind of represents concrete. But again, that could be something that we would look at in our design process. And we talked earlier today about the possibility of shading the concrete with dye to make it look to whatever type of color that we would want to. So that's one of the things that we'd be considering as we go into this. But as you're coming across the bridge, if you're walking on that side of the bridge, this is might be what you would see approximately. Our next slide. So this is looking down one of the driveways on West Avenue. I believe it's one of the multifamily units, and this is what the wall might look like towards the end of that driveway. You see that it cuts across the backyard there, and note that that tree there, we removed that from the picture as well to more accurately represent the 15-foot setback from the wall that would be required for woody materials, and we'll touch on that again later as well. So that's what the wall might look like in that area. Our next slide. This is another picture headed across the backyard of several properties there along West Avenue. You can see we did try and put some texture to the wall to show that we could have a form liner for the concrete that would make it look more like a stone wall or something like that. That texture can vary based on the form liner that we have, and we'll again address that later in this presentation as well. All right, our next slide. This is a backyard along West Avenue, and this represents about the four and a half to five-foot height wall and what it would look like from the backyard. It would cut across this person's backyard, giving them, leaving them no access to the shed in this deck. Most likely would end up in removal of those features. And so we did that in this picture where we photoshopped out the deck and the wall and the shed to include the wall. Next slide. And this is as we're getting closer to the railroad through the property. This wall is probably a little taller than what it would be in general in this area. Probably a little bit shorter than that, but it gives you an idea of what it would look like and where it might cut across through the property. Of course, that is kind of one of the details that we're working on still is where exactly on this portion. Do we want to be out closer to the river like we were in option one? Or option two, where we'd be a little bit closer in towards the property as we're showing in this picture here? Next slide. So this kind of gives you an idea again of the different types of flood walls. I think I've showed this before. The picture on the left is one that uses a form liner that makes it look like there it's kind of a rock wall that's made out of rock instead of concrete. So basically, when you pour the concrete, you have a liner on the form that gives it that look, and it has some nice, basically like fence post-type features that show in between the segments of the wall. Kind of makes it look not like just a regular concrete wall, but has some definite, definite nice features to it. The picture in the middle with the wooden fence and then the steel sheet pile, you know, that's what just it would look like if it was left as bare sheet pile, what we're considering for the Groveland Avenue portion of it. Again, that could also be covered with concrete, and that we could also stamp and color as necessary. And then the far picture to the right is the final version. That is just more of a plain concrete wall. It's got a fin to it that is partly a type of form liner, but it's not as fancy as the stone that we see in the far left example. Next slide. There had been several questions about what a pump station might look like. We've talked about the fact that there's two outfalls that go through the flood wall, and this also gives you another example of what a flood wall could look like. So the round structure in the middle of this first picture on the left, that concrete with the little, yep, that one right there where the arrow is, that actually is a pump station. It's basically just a concrete pipe in the ground. And then if you look at the picture on the upper right, it has two pumps in it on rails attached to a pipe that then they pump out through that wall that you see on the picture on the left. And that picture on the left, that wall, that is in Displanes, and that is a picture of, again, an example of what you could do to the concrete to make it look more like a rock wall as opposed to just concrete. Has some nice relief to it, some different sized blocks and such like that. The silver cabinet on the right of that picture, that is the electrical that runs those sump pumps, and that is the main structure that you would see above ground besides that cap of concrete on top of the, on top of the pipe that sunk in. Another example in the lower right-hand corner, again, this is in Displanes. You can see there's just another concrete and two electrical panels that operate those pumps that are in the ground. So when we're talking about a pump station, this is a very minimal look to it. It can, it blends right in kind of and doesn't take up a lot of space. So even though there isn't a lot of space available where we're looking to put the pump stations, we believe that these would be options that would be very viable for that. All right, so our next slide. Yeah, so this is where we get a chance to look at other considerations of what we've been talking about. So there's been several questions that have been presented about greenery and trees, and the rules that the Corps of Engineers have enforced about constructing flood walls and levies is that there's absolutely no woody vegetation within 15 feet of the foundation of the wall. With a concrete wall like this, the foundation usually doesn't extend too far out from the base of the wall that you see. But there are some that have slight lips that come out underground to help hold them, give them more stability in the air. Depends on the height of the wall. We think that this wall we could construct without much of a foundation lip, and so you would basically see 15 feet from the base of the wall out on either side that would be free of all trees and woody vegetation. And that is a rule that is hard and fast. We cannot allow trees or shrubs in that particular zone of, around any of our flood walls or levies. They do create preferential pathways for flooding to occur through those walls or to damage the walls themselves. And so that is one of the rules that we would have to follow. We are allowed to plant grass, and we would be able to consider native grasses and other plants to be allowed within a zone, within that 15 feet. But we'd also need to make sure that we allow for proper inspection and maintenance to occur of that wall. So we do need to leave pathways on either side that would need to be maintained. Every year, the Corps of Engineers partners with the local sponsor to come out and inspect each of these facilities that are constructed. We take the opportunity to go through, walk along the wall, note anything that needs to be maintained or changed, and give the chance to work with the local government to do that. So that is part of why we have the rules about the 15 feet on either side. But we are willing to work on things like prairie grasses and other possible plants that could be allowed within that zone, but still allow for operation and maintenance to occur as well. There's also been many questions about FEMA certification. The design height of 618 currently does not meet the FEMA certification standards, and we've been pretty upfront about that, has not changed. There has been questions, well, could we go to higher ground? Unfortunately, the availability of higher ground, if we were to try and say shoot for 619, which may be closer to what would meet a FEMA certification standard, means that we would have to extend the wall along Park Avenue a lot further in order to even get to 619. We were able to complete a survey in that area. We thought that the very far end of Park Avenue as it connects with Forest there would possibly give us a chance to reach 618. We actually have to go all the way across the street. So we're going to have to work on what it is to get to 618 and have some type of closure across that road that would involve most likely creating a small sandbag wall. That would be part of our operation and maintenance manual. So the city would be required to operate during a flood, the building of some type of sandbag wall across the street so that we could connect with the 618-foot contour that is available across the street. To go with that, you know, the FEMA certification, it's not completely off the table, but we also have Illinois Bulletin 70 that was updated last year. Their Illinois Bulletin 70 is a rainfall bulletin. It basically dictates the design of all water features of anything constructed in the state of Illinois. I believe they're going to be calling it Bulletin 75. That's what we've heard. But it's just an update to it, and basically it takes into account climate change and the more intense storms that we have been experiencing here in Illinois. And the rainfall amounts in Cook County did increase by quite a bit. And so we have started the process of updating the model for the Displanes River using Bulletin 75 and the new rainfall. The initial model update indicates that we have a higher 1% annual exceedance probability or what we normally call the 100-year flood level in this area. This is not a definitive finding because we are still going through a lot of process in terms of refining the model, making sure that it operates the way we want it to. We also have a lot of collaboration that we need to do, working with MWRD, the State of Illinois, the Illinois State Water Survey, and eventually working with FEMA as well. But it is an indication that when we say that it may not meet FEMA certification standards in the future, as we look at how climate change will impact the water levels in rivers in our area, that could definitely impact what a certification would look like. So at this point in time, we're going to stick with our statement that FEMA certification standards are not going to be met by 618, and it's really unclear how this would play out as we look at the future updates to the modeling that are occurring based on this new Bulletin 75. Just to go back again, the flood ball height from ground level, and that's from that little squiggly line we talked about earlier. For option one, it varies from three to 10 or 11 feet, and most of it is between five and seven feet. When you look at option two, it's really from two to seven feet high, most being in the four to seven foot range. So next slide. Here's our project costs. I really haven't changed this lately. This is the same budget that we presented back when we started over a year ago. Project engineering and design still just under $700,000. When we get to construction management, we'd expect about $300,000 in construction management, lands and damages and relocations adding up to about a million and a half, and a construction project of about $4.7 million with total cost of $7.1 million, 4.6 being federal and two and a half coming from the non-federal cost share, which currently the Village of Riverside has a partnership with MWRD to cover those costs. Next slide. So so far, we've received $500,000 from the federal government for the Corps to use in the design process, and we've gotten non-federal funding through MWRD of $269,000, giving us a total funding of $769,000 available. What has been obligated and you actually used so far, this is all on design efforts, what you've seen here tonight, developing those design drawings, developing the pictures, walking through, getting surveys, holding meetings, et cetera, $130,479.64. So we still have almost $640,000 left for design that is through November 21st of 2020. So our proposed schedule, we would hope to finalize alignment decision sometime this spring, which would get us the ability to finish our 50% design. The wall design itself does depend on where it ends up on that, whether we go further inland or out closer to the river. There's some areas where we may desire to move just a little closer in to ensure that we have a wall design that is easy to construct. And we would definitely work with the village on that, which decision would be made versus option one versus option two. Then we, once we get to that and are authorized to move forward into final engineering and design, we'd look at 12 to 18 months, which would put us at least through spring of 2022, if not into the summer. We could then award a construction contract in the summer of 2022 with construction beginning that fall and winter with about approximately a two-year construction period ending in summer of 2024. Next slide. And that's all I have for now on the update. So I'm ready to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. So before we open it up to generalized questions, I'd ask if any of the trustees have any questions for you or Mr. Zucker. We also have with us this evening Orion Galey, our village engineer from Burke Engineering. So he's also available to answer questions. So let's start with the village board first. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Hannan?
Yeah, I've got three questions. And first of all, Mr. Zucker, thanks for the presentation. It really, I had about 15 questions and you knocked most of them off, so thank you.
All right.
The first question, I was intrigued. You mentioned, or I think you mentioned, a Forest Avenue gate to cover that. Could you give a little bit more detail on that and how that would be designed or worked, or just worried about sort of the optics as you drive it to town over the bridge and what would happen?
Yeah, so we have several different designs that we could look at. We have what we call a swing gate that basically would be, and we've looked at, there's an area right there on Forest Avenue as you come up to the bridge. There's a little green space off as you're driving over from Riverside into, I'm not sure what's across the river, as you're headed that direction. There's a little green space off to the right, and so that would be a perfect kind of quote-unquote "storage" area for this gate. It could be what we call a swing gate that would be, there would be not a tall pillar, but a pillar of concrete that would have a metal gate attached to it that would store in that area and then swing around and drop down into the roadway and provide the necessary height to reach 618 across that roadway. We also have the ability to put in a sliding gate where we would have to construct basically a nice smooth concrete portion across that road, and then the gate would be stored again in that area to the right, and it would have to be somehow manually pushed or with some type of motor pushed across the road. There's all types of gates that we could put in there. We would work with the village on that design and what it would look like.
Okay, that's very helpful. Second question, I know that at one of the properties, there's drainage that comes from the street that goes out, and that's really a cause of a lot of the backup that once that drainage gets overwhelmed, it starts going the other way. How is the wall going to address, you know, that particular problem?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's where we are looking at putting in pump stations at those two. Like, we have identified with the village those two pipes that they normally shut off and cause a lot of that backflow. And so our proposal would, for the wall, is to install those pump stations like the ones that I showed you. They would then have a pipe that goes out through the wall and would be able to eject that water using pumps instead of having to shut those pipes off.
And those pumps would be operated by the village or the water reclamation?
Those would be by the village as the signatory on the project partnership agreement.
Great. And then last question, and this is more of a, I guess, safety issue is, you know, I know there's still a decision on how close the wall is going to get to the water line, but some of the residents have expressed concern that, you know, that behind the wall becomes a spot where, you know, kids gather to smoke, drink, hang out outside of the view, and just wanted to get a sense of, you know, how much. ground will be behind. And obviously it's, it's the villages issue to probably please that, but just want to see from your perspective in design. You know, what could be done to sort of minimize, you know, having the, uh, West Suburban, uh, party beach going on?
But Jeff, before, before you answer that matter, just a second. Um, and Jessica, I'm going to address this to you or Sonia. I just received a text from Mr. Up Hughes that uh, our video feed seems to be frozen. So if, if one of you could check with, uh, Riverside TV and see what's going on with that, I'd appreciate it. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, what it looks like in the area as you get closer to Forest Avenue is we probably have about twenty feet or so of property beyond that's sometimes underwater, sometimes not. You know, in the design of this wall, we'd have to look at what we would do in that area. We would want to limit access to it. We don't want people hanging out back there because that is dangerous. Um, so we'd want to make sure that we tie in pretty closely with the Forest Avenue Bridge and regulate in some way. Uh, if I remember correctly, there's a few fences out there anyways, uh, based on that. I think what I dot has, you know, there's some limiting factor to the access and we'd work with the village on what type of you know, fence would be there, how we'd attach it to the bridge so that it wouldn't be easy to get back there, but we'd still want to be able to get back there for uh, our operation and maintenance inspections. So we'll work with the village on that and we think we could do something with, you know, some nice, uh, maybe a little bit of prairie grass or something that would fill it in a little bit, not leave it just a blank beach per se. And we'll just work with you on access.
Great. Very helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Gallegos?
Yes, thank you. Um, Jeff, here's a question for you. What happens if we have this horrible storm? Which not only causes flooding, but also an electrical power outage? What happens with those pump stations?
Yeah, so in most cases, um, we, what we do is we put on generator hookups on those pump stations. Uh, and we would leave it up to the village, um, to be able to provide that um, generator that would be able to drive out, hook up and operate the pumps. Uh, the other option is to have a tow behind pump that you would come out and supplement with. Um, we know that it is a possibility. It is our hope that any power outage would be short, um, but those are things that we can try and design for, at least in providing the ability to provide backup power uh, to those locations.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Other questions from the trustees? So I'll throw it open now to, uh, the other folks who are joining us here tonight. Uh, as I said, if you have a question, if you could please put your video on and so that I can see you or an alternative, if you can just send a chat so that I can see who wishes to be heard. So I'm not seeing any questions from folks who are joining us. Going once. Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me? I'm, I'm not used to doing this. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. If you could speak up a little bit, that would help.
Hey, I live on Lincoln and I'm, um, and I missed the very beginning of your presentation, so I'm not sure. All, all I know is that on Lincoln, when we get a flood, the street fills up, the sewer rises, and once it starts bubbling out of the sewer, basements start to flood. And I heard the, uh, mention about not being FEMA um, would have approved. So what I'm curious is would this affect the people on Lincoln as well? Um, and if they're not FEMA approved, does that mean everybody still has to have flood insurance or I, I, I don't understand what the what that all mean, how it'll impact us?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, sorry, I'm trying, trying to orient myself to, uh, Lincoln here.
It's just one street over from Groveland.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, and I, I'm, it's between Park and Forest.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, so, um, so when we talk about FEMA certification, um, what we're really talking about is relief from flood insurance. Uh, and so when we get to a FEMA certification of a levy, you, what they require is that it has the one hundred year level of protection plus at least a two-foot, um, free board or, uh, insurance policy, basically. Um, at least for the Corps of Engineers, I think a lot of people have looked up the FEMA regulations for us in the past and and for most other entities, FEMA requires a three-foot level of free board. Uh, we have a close partnership with FEMA and they allow us to do a risk analysis and propose a slightly shorter of around two feet. Um, we also have some new policies with FEMA that allow us to do a further risk, risk analysis that could result in something a little less than two feet. If, um, if everything worked out in terms of the risk analysis, um, but that's something that, uh, we would have to go through as we finish the design and as we get closer to dealing with, uh, Bulletin seventy-five. Uh, so really the only impact of FEMA certification is the fact that, um, those being protected by the levy uh, would not see relief from flood insurance. Um, we have done this in the past. Um, it is something that, uh, we've built levies to a lesser level in other areas. Uh, we have one in Liberty Villa Estates. Uh, and it's built to a seventy-five year level, um, that has, it has not been FEMA certified, but it has provided a, a lot of protection to those folks up in Libertyville Estates. So it's something that we do do. Uh, we prefer to try and get you FEMA certified. It is definitely a benefit, um, but it's not a guarantee in this case.
I, uh, another question is do I understand it right that on Park, you're going to have from the water or from the um, from the river going, um, pointing, going the wrong way, going, uh, east on Park. Is that going to go, how far street wire? Like Lincoln is the first street and then, um, where I don't remember with Grove or
Yeah.
So how far is that going to go?
Yeah, so the flood wall will go, um, be for all the way from Groveland, all the way to, I, I think I said this wrong earlier, to Woodside Road. Um, so just before Woodside Road is where it would end, it would, and it'd be, you know, kind of like a one to two-foot wall at that point, uh, at Woodside Road.
So that would run along where there's, uh, parking lot, diagonal now.
Yes, the plan is to put the wall in that blank area between the parking lot and the, the, uh, the fence that's there.
Okay, so in the past, our, our impression has been that the water on Lincoln has come from, um, let's just say, I don't, I don't want to offend anybody, but Maplewood. You know, come over Maplewood and then just come down Lincoln. And so the theory is that that wall would prevent that?
Correct.
Okay, and then what happens just from rainwater when, um, when the street fills, even if the, if that's if that stops the water from coming from Maplewood, if the street just fills up and the sewer fills up, um, will those pumps you're talking about, are those designed to keep the sewers empty so that the street will stay dry?
Yes.
That's a theory?
Yes, that is one of the calculations that we still have to finish in terms of sizing. Uh, I mean, our initial thought is that those smaller pumps would be sufficient. And we think that that kind of goes with the size of the pipes that we have been told are out there. Um, but we would have to double check those calculations and make sure. Um, of course, if it requires bigger pumps, then we end up with bigger structures. Um, so our desire would be keep it small so that it has a place that we can easily put it. But we also don't want to leave you guys with a lot of rainwater in the street either. So the idea behind the pump stations is to be able to remove that rainwater from behind the flood wall and get it back into the river as it would normally flow. Um, so that's why when we build a flood while we put pump stations in, we want to, that water would normally flow into the river. Instead of doing that, it's going to get collected in your street, uh, your street stormwater collection system, and then those pumps will pump it in this case, through the wall, uh, out into the river itself.
Even if the river is at a, a really high level, the water can go it can get into the river without backing up and coming back in?
Yep. So what we do is we put the pipe, uh, out through the wall at a very, at, at a, at a level that's normally not covered. Uh, we make sure that it outlets into the river itself and that there's ripper up there to prevent erosion and such. Um, and then we also, um, put a flap gate on that so that there's no water can back up through it. Uh, but the pumps would overcome any pressure from the river itself and push the water out through that flap gate.
So in theory, then, once this is accomplished, the, when there's a heavy rain, Lincoln should be relatively not dry, but not the, not a, a sweet.
That, that would be the plan, that there would not be accumulation of water behind the flood wall, uh, that the pump stations would take care of that and help the, the sewer, the stormwater system that's there remove that water and get it out to the river.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Thanks for your questions.
You're welcome.
So the next, uh, questions we have are from Patrick. So Pat, Patrick, if you could unmute yourself and, uh, if you want to join us with video, that's fine. Uh, and you can ask your questions to Mr. Zucker.
Yeah, so, um, sorry, my video isn't working on, on this computer. Um, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so one of my questions is where will the, um, these pump stations be located and about how, uh, large are they going to be? Because it looks like, uh, they'll be on, uh, our property side of the wall. And already with, uh, one of the, one of the drawings, the second one, um, it showed the wall being in fairly, pretty, pretty far in the yard, which would, uh, give us a very small backyard. So I'd like to know, where, where will those pump stations be located? How big will they be? Also, right above where those, um, proposed flood walls are going to go are the overhead electric lines. So what would happen with those?
Yeah, so let's start with the pump stations. So really what we're looking at is there's one pipe that runs along Forest Avenue. And so we'd be looking for some location in the right of way along Forest Avenue to put in a pump station. Um, those pictures that I showed earlier in the presentation, um, those are really like, uh, for three to four foot, uh, around concrete pipe that sunk into the ground, basically like, uh, um, what was it? I mean, it's just a round circle in the ground, basically, uh, and the cover, you know, sticks up between one and two feet above the ground. Um, so we'd be looking for somewhere in the right of way along Forest Avenue to place one of those, um, for the first part. And then, um, the other pipe is I believe it's somewhere near the intersection of Pine and West Avenue and then heads out between two properties down there towards the river. And so again, we'd look at something uh, near West Avenue, uh, where there would be right away from, from the street itself and put that in. Um, or maybe possibly out near the wall. Uh, we could put it in the fifteen-foot easement that would be required um, and have it closer to the wall. Just depends on what works out best, uh, in the final design. So that would be, um, that one. Uh, as far as the electrical overhead lines are concerned, um, we will have to coordinate with ComEd uh, regarding where those poles are. Um, it will be something that we'll have to work around in, in terms of construction. Uh, driving sheet usually requires some overhead equipment. We don't want it running into the electrical wires. Uh, so we'll have to coordinate with ComEd in regards to if those, uh, wires either need to be, to be moved, uh, somewhere else. Um, once the wall is in place, uh, they would not interfere with the wall in any way, shape or form. It'd just be during construction. Uh, so we may have some, uh, work with ComEd in terms of temporarily moving those wires uh, in, into a different location or, uh, we'll have to see what, what we can come up with.
Yeah, because, um, well, my, my concern with that aspect is there's this big wall in my yard now, which is much closer to my house, along with a fifteen-foot, um, ease or right of way easement, whatever you want to call it. Um, and then above that is a bunch of wires. So there's no view at all out the back except this concrete wall and wires. It's just, it's, it's not pleasant and it's going to really kill my property value.
So our, our next, uh, was, were those, I think those were all the questions Patrick had. Our next question is from, um, Ms. Johnson. Uh, if you would like to unmute and ask your question.
Hi, can I be heard okay?
Very well.
Okay, thank you. Um, so over a year ago, when this was last talked about publicly, uh, residents had a number of different, uh, suggestions, which for each of them, the core was saying it was not sufficient, each of these was not sufficient. Um, but things that in aggregate may have an impact on essentially the, the height of the wall that may be needed. Um, and I'd like to talk about a, a couple of things. Um, first of all, question of where the water goes. I know the cor- core says it's not being sent down river, but the first thing is we already have a backup because when the core notched Hoffman Dam, they choked the river back up with the fill. And if that river was actually allowed to find its natural course, it would be flowing more freely and we wouldn't have as much backup. Um, we also have the issue that the village has ceased pumping its wells and we have saturated ground um, so that, that cannot absorb, uh, excess uh, during flooding. And I'm wondering if anyone is looking into the idea of actually, and it, this goes to problems that throughout the village with people's basements and the like, so it's even beyond the flooding. You know, having it so that the, the soil can um, is, is not so saturated and can actually absorb uh, flooding as, as it should be. Um, another thing is there's a disused, uh, property on Groveland that the owner cannot build on and cannot raise the, the grade. Uh, but maybe that's something that can be acquired and turned into a catchment. Um, and you know, the idea of the streets being completely dry, I, I don't need to have the street completely dry. I don't need to have my yard completely dry. I just don't want it coming to the building. Um, and I, I think that's, that's the biggest thing is people don't want it coming to their building. And because my perspective of, you know, if, if the streets are flooded and my front yard's flooded, uh, but it's not touching my prop, my building, that's fine. I also wonder, you were talking about raising the roads and I would want to know what kind of calculation there might be if we actually lower the streets and create those as a catchment so that they can hold more water um, as opposed to having it go up towards our, our buildings. Um, and I'm glad to hear that you're willing to do something other than a hundred year flood. I mean, I understand hundred year flood is standard practice, um, but it is actually arbitrary. Um, and if we can meet what we need as far as the protection of the buildings with something, if it's eighty-five percent, um, and then you don't have to go up to seven foot walls. I, I think that, uh, especially with the probability that we won't get FEMA certified anyway. Um, you know, if we can do eighty-something or whatever the calculation is, still protect our buildings and not have to have as much of an eyesore as being proposed right now. Uh, I think that would all be, uh, useful.
Let's, uh, let's let Mr. Zucker, there, there's a lot, you, you put a lot
Understood.
Or respond, please.
Yeah, so as far as, uh, permeability of the ground and really allowing the Yeah, so as far as uh, permeability of the ground and really allowing the ground to soak up more water. Uh, I mean, that would be the desire to allow the ground to soak up this water. Unfortunately, it's not um, the ground that's the problem. It's all the impermeable pavement and buildings that uh, society has put up in all of Cook and Lake County. Um, that's what leads to this flooding. Um, there's a lot of areas that are, do allow the water to infiltrate as much as possible, but it's still just not enough to overcome all of the improvements that have been made to the land itself. Uh, in terms of making it viable for us to use as a modern society. So uh, you know, it, it is important to be able to allow the ground to uh, absorb as much of the water as possible. Uh, and the core is working on projects. We have a lot of ecosystem restoration projects throughout uh, the Chicagoland area that are trying to improve water infiltration in those areas. And we are continuing to work on those and we'll continue to do that. Unfortunately, the amount of development that has occurred in this metropolitan area just does not allow us to get to the point where that would overcome what has happened in terms of runoff that is created from all of our roads and buildings. So, great idea. In terms of keeping the streets dry, I can't guarantee it'll be a hundred percent of the time, even with the pump stations, but we wanna do our best. Uh, we wanna still allow you guys to drive on those. Uh, but in some ways, they do act as kind of a little bit of a catchment. Um, the amount of water that they hold seems like a lot, but unfortunately, it's just not uh, enough to overcome what is needed uh, through the flooding that occurs in this area to protect the homes of Groveland and um, and of Lincoln and other areas there. So um, so it's a great idea, just there's not enough room there to hold that much water. Um, one property is, is a good idea, but again, uh, the amount of water that you can hold on that property is just minimal compared to what the amount of water that roars by here in the river. So um, so it really would take a couple hundred acres and a couple feet of water on a couple hundred acres to be able to uh, lower the, the, to store the amount of water going by. Um, and, and really, we've looked at that up and down the river, trying to find a storage location that could be sufficient to remove enough water from the river and lower it so that we wouldn't have to build flood walls and levees. Um, but really that in this suburban area does not exist. Um, there's just not enough property. Um, and it's, it is just too much water. So it's something we've looked at and we really wanted to try and be able to do. Um, but unfortunately, it just, there isn't the room available. Everything's been developed and there's just not a space for it.
I'd, I'd like you to address the Hoffman Dam issue, the fact that, that is choked back up and it is a not allowing the free flow, but it has not been allowed to create the natural, reestablish the natural flow of the river uh, in, in our area at all.
Yeah, so the removal of the Hoffman Dam was uh, was an Army Corps project that uh, has naturalized the, that area as much as possible.
Not true.
Removing the dam did allow it to seek its normal level, um, and it did have some minor flood benefits. Um, we have documentation that there are a much greater native fish species uh, that are moving up and down the river now. Um, we have IDNR uh, studies that have indicated that and they have indicated that it is a much healthier river because of that action at this point in time.
I understand it is much healthier, but the river was choked back up with all of that fill that was put in. There's no denying that when you keep adding and adding.
Fill in there, actually. All of that uh, that sediment that is in there was already there. That's already accumulated.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, in here, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, this evening, we're not gonna relitigate the Hoffman Dam issue.
Okay, I'll just add, add one thing and, okay, I'll, I'll just do one wrap up. Um, I, I think it would be important to see what can be done other than the hundred year flood, since it's, sounds like it's not likely that we'll get FEMA certified anyway and that won't change anything. Um, and uh, to, to see how that might affect what the aesthetic of this is because the previous conversation was that they had to do the hundred year flood. So I'm happy to see that that's different. And um, I, when um, my, my other point was that I don't, I don't think dry streets is the goal. I don't think dry streets is, is a goal here. Um, and I, I think that people need to, to think about that. It's not about the, all of the properties staying dry all the time and you can't out engineer nature. So we have to work with it as much as possible, not against it because nature wins ultimately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I'm not seeing any other additional questions on uh, my chat feed here. Would anyone else, does anyone else have questions for either Mr. Zucker or Mr. Gailey? Before we move on to public comments. Okay, seen that. Well, thank you very.
It looks like Adriana has a question. She's raised her hand.
Ah, okay, I didn't see that. Adriana, please.
This is her husband, Wayne Lucas. I was just wanting to mention, is it good to building a factor of safety when you build a wall, say with attrition? As the permeable surface of ground might get worse uh, from here down the river, where uh, it'll be good to maintain that preventative nature of the wall into the future years to come. The better we uh, uh, do our work in making that happen, the longer the benefit will be.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's part of why we're still looking at six eighteen. We may not be able to get FEMA certification at that level. Um, but given the future uh, of climate change and how we could see more intense storms uh, more frequently. And the flood levels could change, we would wanna try and build um, a wall that still provides a high level of protection. Uh, even though it may not provide that relief from the flood insurance, it would provide uh, the highest level of protection that we think we can build for you. Um, and that would hopefully have some insurance level to it in terms of having uh, a height that is above what we think would be a hundred, hundred year flood level, but yet might not still reach that FEMA certification level of building. So, so we wanna try and maximize that as much as possible um, and see what we can do to help protect the people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else with questions for Mr. Zucker or Mr. Gailey before we let them leave us for the evening? Only once, twice? Okay, thank you, Mr. Zucker. Thank.
Sorry, Richard Rankin has a comment.
Yeah, Mr. Rankin.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to uh, remind everybody that the current berm um, for the thirty years that I've been here is never overtopped. Uh, we've had some pretty intense uh, floods that I've experienced. Jeff, is that at six twelve?
Uh, that is at six sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. So for those who are measuring the differences and, and trying to get, get an idea where the current one would be as it relates to the old one, which has never been breached, um, just thought I'd, I'd bring that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Anyone else with questions? We're still gonna have public comment after this. So if folks have things that they just want to say, there'll be an opportunity for that. But if you have questions right now for Mr. Zucker or Mr. Gailey, now's the time. I think that's it. Mr. Zucker, Mr. Gailey, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Further conversation. So now we'll move on to uh, public comment. If there are folks here who have things to say either on this issue or other issues, if you'll physically raise your hand, not, not the hand on the Zoom, cuz I can't look at both at the same time. But if you can physically raise your hand, I'll call on you and you can have your say. Does anyone have anything they'd like to comment on? Ms. Patterson, please.
Yes, I, I sent an email to you not knowing if I could be on the call, but I would be happy to just share that myself if, if that's all right.
That'd be wonderful.
So I live at nineteen West Avenue. It's a tiny duplex and I recently experienced flooding in May. I will just read what I wrote. Um, there are several reasons I support this project. One, while this most recent flood didn't cause catastrophic damage to my home, the next one might. I live in a very small duplex and all my utilities are located in the basement. In a more severe flood, I would lose my furnace, water heater, washer and dryer, and electricity. And without electricity, I also wouldn't be able to pump out the water. Two, flood insurance doesn't cover everything, including mold remediation. Even after this recent flood, I experienced mold growth in my crawl space, but the deductible I have is high and the improvements I need to make to treat and prevent mold growth wouldn't be covered. This creates an, an unhealthy living environment for me that is not easily or affordably fixed. Three, the attached unit takes in even more water than mine because it's on the corner. And even though I pumped out my own basement, I experienced a constant flow of water through the wall from the other unit. Since I can't coordinate efforts with that unit, it's impossible for me to adequately reduce my own risk. Four, in addition to paying for flood insurance annually, I now have a storage rental of nearly two hundred dollars a month since I can't keep anything of value stored in the basement or crawl space. During this last flood, I was fortunate to be able to move all my valuables to the upper floors before it got bad. But I used up every square foot of space doing so and could barely move around my house for days while I waited for the waters to recede enough to bring in a truck and move things out. If a worse flood happened, it could easily leak into my first floor as well and there is no way I could salvage my furniture or other personal items. It would be a devastating loss. Five, finally, because of the flood risk, my property value will virtually never increase. There are very few improvements I can make to my property to make it more valuable, but because of potential flood damage, I may have to make repeated costly improvements over the years. So that is my support of this project and how it would really change my life as a homeowner and resident of Riverside. And I hope that the village will move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson, and I, and thank you also for the photographs that you sent along with your correspondence to the village board. Uh, it's, it's very helpful when we can hear directly from people like you who have, you know, suffered repeated losses from these floods. So thank you for that. Anyone else like to comment? Mr. Lenesky? You're muted, sir.
Yeah, no, I'm um, in agreement with Michelle. Um, on Lincoln, we've, you know, all the damage she's had in her basement, we've had the same thing and it happens over and over again. You know, I've, I've been here sixteen years and I think I've had five feet of water two years and uh, you know, appreciable, less water, but a lot of water more than that. And when I bought the house, the seller said, oh yeah, well, it floods once uh, every hundred years and we had the flood and you're good to go. So I'm, I'm ready to go. It's more like it now. So um, you know, I just agree. I think if anything that could be done that would keep the water, and, and once again, the water doesn't have to be empty on Lincoln. It just has to, you know, the sewer has to be moving, water in the sewer has to be moving fast enough so it doesn't come back into the houses. Cuz that's where everybody's getting it from the sewer, not from the uh, you know, as much for, as from the street. That's probably, that's all. So I agree with her. I hope you pass this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other comments, please? Depending on my other eyes here too, to see something if I don't see it, so.
Miss Sandoval has sent a message in saying she's very much in support of this project.
Thank you. Well, not, not seeing anyone right now. We, we do have, we, the board has received a number of uh, email communications this week that have been asked to be read in as public comment. So uh, I don't know, Ms. Frances, are you going to do that for us?
Yes, I am. There are many of them, so.
And there'll be time after this, uh, if anyone changes their mind, I would like to comment.
Thank you, sir. Dear trustees, the purpose of this letter is to encourage you to vote for the flood control measures proposed by the US Army Corps of Engineers. My family and I have lived on Lincoln Avenue for the past twenty years. Being first time and naive home, home buyers, I remember a Realtor's words. The house is in a flood plain, but has not flooded since the berm was built. So just buy the flood insurance and then drop it after the first year. Shame on us for not doing proper due diligence. So I'm, I'm doing what I can so others do not have to experience what we have been through. Below are my reasons why this measure should be supported. And this resident provides um, a graph in which shows the historical cress. Um, back in the nineteen forties, there was one, nineteen fifties, three, nineteen sixties, three, nineteen eighties, three, nineteen nineties, two, from two thousand to two thousand and nine, there was one, and from twenty ten to present, there are, have been nine historical cress. Nine historical cress above eight feet, which is when park areas start to flood in the past ten years compared to nine historical cress in the previous fifty years. Historical rainfall events are increasing due to the changes in our climate and the impact at the local level is notable. Mixed residential housing stock means impact of flooding events are not always captured one hundred percent. The Village of Riverside has greatly improved the communication to residents about historic flood event and the National Weather Service real-time data feed is an invaluable tool for residents to track and assess next steps to protect their residences and families. It is these challenging times that the community of single-family home residents and non-renters alike truly come together to help move belongings, care for each other's children, share meals, and also help the elderly who live amongst us. Unfortunately, all of this comes at the same time with full knowledge that no matter how much prep work is done, the day or two before the flood, there is always the weeks of cleanup that come after. I have heard stories from renters who either missed the memo, were not aware they were at risk, or simply not at home to, to return home and all of their precious belongings have been saturated in a feat of river water. It is heartbreaking to see these individuals who cannot afford to lose anything, lose the majority of their items, while at the same time, we are incurring losses of our own. The renters only receive assistance if the event is declared a federal disaster zone. And even then, it does not make them whole. And they move elsewhere shortly after the flood as their former home will not be habitable for an extended period of time. While many residents complain of flooding in their basements due to improper drainage, lack of overhead plumbing, or other factors that can be mitigated, we are fortunate that our home remains dry. The only time we flood is when the river is in our street, encroaching down our driveway and the hydrostatic pressure in the ground causes water to come through hairline cracks in our foundation. Over the twenty years we have lived here, we have spent tens of thousands of dollars on flood insurance, landscaping, portable water barriers, numerous pumps, four generators, three furnaces, two water heaters, and countless other flood mitigation and flood cleanup efforts that were not covered by flood insurance. We stay because we love our one hundred and twelve year old home and the quality of life that we enjoy here in Riverside. Approving the Groveland Avenue levy brings a small piece of security as we encounter these. Approving the Groveland Avenue levy brings a small piece of security as we encounter these drastic rain events. That are happening more frequently. Your vote for the levy benefits the current homeowners, renters. And the children that live in this part of town as well, the generations that follow. Thank you for your time and consideration, Maya and Ryan Schultz.
Dear trustees, my name is Teresa Sosa and I lived in Riverside for eighteen years. I still own two properties in Riverside, thirty eight West Avenue, my previous home. And forty West Avenue condominium I've owned since two thousand and five. I want to voice my strong support of the berm rebuilding project. My properties have flooded a few times and it was very difficult to get back to normal, but I love Riverside and do not want to sell. I believe most people have stayed despite flooding for the, this very reason. Please consider those of us who have stayed despite dealing with the flooding. And who now are hoping to get some protection from future flooding. Teresa Sosa. Hello, thank you for all of your work regarding the Groveland Berm Project. I know this is, that it is complicated, time consuming and contentious. I will attend this Thursday's board meeting, but decided to write you to voice my support in case an opportunity does not arise during the meeting. My husband and I are both in favor of the berm, even though we will regret the loss of our view. From our front room where we enjoy watching the wood ducks. Great blue herons, egrets and other water birds that migrate along the river each spring and fall. That will be a hefty price to pay, but it is worth it. The berm is of value, not just to our homes along the river, but also to Riverside in general. Every year when heavy rain, rains fall and climate change will exacerbate that. Many new cha, news channels automatically send people out to document the rising waters in Riverside. And they station themselves on the corner of Groveland and Forest, waiting for the spectacle. Riverside has become infamous and this has a negative impact upon our town's image as well as our home values, which affect everyone. In addition, when the river actually breaches the bank and causes our homes to be small islands surrounded by water. It creates great expense to the village and places undue burden upon our police, fire. Department, Public Works and Gas Company, ComEd, etc. This time of money could be better spent elsewhere in the village. The personal cost is large as well. We have lived here for thirty four years and have lived through four floods. FEMA declared us a disaster area four times. The financial burden is enormous, requiring new furnaces, air conditioners, water heaters. Electric panels, etc. to be replaced, but the physical toll is greater because it takes a lot of effort to haul. Washing machines and dryers up and down, as well as to clean and disinfect the basement walls after the water recedes. And although we've only been declared a disaster area four times. There have been numerous close calls, spring of twenty twenty being the most recent. Where we had to drag everything up and down because it looked as though the river would surely come over. While we all appreciate dodging a bullet, racing around with washing machines and the dryers is exhausting. Creates a never ending psychological burden, even when the basement stays dry. From my point of view, there are many reasons that the berm would be beneficial to Riverside. However, I will be interested and open minded about the Army Corps' final study. If they deem it unnecessary, so be it. I will bow to their greater understanding of, of the science of the project. In the end, they are the people with actual knowledge and expertise and I trust that. We can have our opinions, but we should listen and respect what the experts say. I remember when the notching of the Hoffman Dam was being debated. Many of our Maple, Maplewood neighbors claimed with absolute certainty that if the dam was, if the dam was notched. Their river walls would crumble, the river would dry up and only great muddy smelly puddles of breeding mosquitoes would be left. None of that came to pass, but they were convinced, offering no science or evidence that they knew what would happen. I hope that this time everyone will take a more respectful view of what the engineers and experts have to say. Thank you Fran and Carlos and Kentara.
President Sales and Trustees, I write to you today in regards to the Groveland Avenue Levy Project. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers would like to facilitate to lessen the risk of flooding in our homes and businesses. At the front of our mind, of, at the front of mind are the many houses and buildings prone to more frequent flooding over the past few years. And what this kind of project could mean for those residents, improve quality of life and finances cannot be understated. But this is a project that also benefits the entire Riverside community. We all utilize businesses that are in the direct line of floods. We travel the streets that floods might temporarily close. We'd hate to see any of those temporarily closed or damaged to the point of requiring a longer term shutdown. And flooding doesn't just affect riversiders, flooded streets and businesses make it more difficult or impossible for visitors from other places to come here. All businesses suffer when that's the case. This levy project is one of the, one of those rare of opportunities to improve our community paid. For by a government body other than our own. I hope you will continue to push forward with this project. Thanks much, Nilsa Sweetser.
My name is Elizabeth Ryan and I'm the owner of the three fat, three flat located at one oh one Lincoln Avenue. I am in support of the Groveland Levy Project. I purchased the building with my sister prior to being placed in the flood plain. Through rezoning the area. We have been dealing with this issue since the first major event in two thousand and eight. And have suffered financial losses. We need help dealing with future floods. I wanted to send you my feedback for consideration on a vote. Sincerely, Elizabeth Ryan. President Sales and Trustees, I am writing in support of rebuilding slash extension of the Groveland Berm. My family has lived on Lincoln since two thousand and six. In that time, we've experienced many different types of flooding events with various amounts of water in our basement. Because our house is over a hundred years old, we have a rather, rather porous foundation. With a sudden heavy rainstorm and/or extended periods of rain, we often get seepage, water seepage in our basement. This happens three or four times a year. With longer periods of rain and/or particularly have, heavy storms. The storm wa, sewers in the street can't handle the rate of the flow and the street will begin to flood. This causes water to backflow into our basement from the drain stack. At this point, we need to bring out our utility pumps and dry vac. Also, at this point, we begin to think about moving the contents of our basement upstairs. This has happened numerous times since we have lived here. The next level of water problem is all hands on deck. This kind of event happened just this past May. The river level was very high. The street was flooded, the water was backing up into the, our front yard and approaching our house. Water was backing up through the drain pipe. The water pressure underground was so high that. Water was coming up through the basement floor and walls. Our sub pump was running almost continuously. Our utility pumps were out and running continuously. We had towels in various places around the basement absorbing water. We were continuously pushing the water with brooms closer to pumps, so it wouldn't accumulate in puddles around the basement. In the middle of all this, we had to carry all the boxes and contents of our basement up to the first floor. The worst of this all started around six P M. In the evening. We are up until about five A M. The next morning, continuously pumping water, exchanging towels, removing water. With the dry vac and helping our neighbors when we could. Had we not stayed up through the night, our basement would have filled with water. Had we not been home or had the electricity gone out, our basement would have filled with water. This, of course, would have meant an entirely different type of event. This all hands on deck event has happened four times since we lived here. The entirely different type of event I mentioned above has happened twice since we've lived here. So twice in almost fifteen years, once in September of two thousand and eight. And, and again in April of twenty thirteen. This is when the river overflowed its banks on both sides of the current berm. We were busy then performing the above tasks, but once the river overflowed its banks, water began pouring into our basement. At the point where the foundation meets with the timber construction. Our basement filled with over five feet of water in about twenty minutes on both of those occasions. At this point, we had to pack our suitcases, gather our small children and try to figure out what to do next. We had to move out of our home for about a, a week both times. Although the berm project will not fully address the various flooding problems we experience, it will address the most severe costly and disruptive issues. When I review the list of current historic crests in the Displanes River at Riverside listed on the NOAA site, website. Six of those crests have occurred since we lived here. For some reason, the crest in May of twenty twenty is not listed. So really the count should be seven. This seems to be rather straightforward evidence that these types of events are occurring more often and are likely to continue to occur. Into the future, overbuilding slash urbanization, lack of adequate stormwater drainage systems. And upstream water treatment facilities will continue to impact the river level here. I personally believe that climate change will continue to increase this impact as well. Several weeks ago, I viewed the interviews posted for our village trustee candidates. They all mentioned their thoughts on few, for the future of our village. Almost all of them said something specifically about wanting to ensure that Riverside remains a viable community for many, many years to come. I feel the Groveland Berm rebuilding project is critically important to achieve that goal. Therefore, I respectfully ask for your vote in favor of this project. Thank you for your time and consideration. Lisa Gurey. Getting close.
Hello, my name is Romney Cirillo and my fiancee Jeanette and I have lived at Groveland, ninety five Groveland Avenue. Since the summer of twenty seventeen. I wanted to reach out personally to give some thoughts and concerns regarding the river berm along Groveland. We attended the town hall meeting sometime last year when the Army Corps presented information on rebuilding the Groveland Berm. To address the continued flooding issues. I took the opportunity towards the end of the meeting to introduce myself and the concerns we've had since living in our home this short period. We have gained a vast amount of information through our wonderful neighbors and other residents living along the river the past three years. Even though we did not experience the horrible flooding in twenty thirteen, we have had a handful of close encounters with the river. This past May being the scariest as river levels rose higher than they did when it crested in twenty thirteen. Many people throughout Riverside and Chicago experienced horrible flooding within their homes. Our neighbors and, and we had the additional burden and worry of the river cresting. Potentially making the situation much worse. It was the first time we also experienced relocating our vehicles and being directly directed by police and fire staff. To evacuate our homes if needed. Through the frustration, our encounter with the firemen on the street was extraordinarily positive and supportive. They even assisted in carrying hoses and pumps I was attempting to bring back to remove water already accumulating. Within our, in our neighbor's basements. During the meeting last year and in an email to Ben Sell shortly after that, I mentioned how we are thrilled to live in Riverside. I am honored that my company has begun working on various projects throughout town such as our mirror pond renovation at the Cooley House. I am excited to continue offering our services to our other residents in the future. We love our home and plan to make many memories in it on Groveland for years to come. It's not only a matter of financial concern, but one of sa, health and safety. We see our neighbors' kids playing every day in the front yards on our street and look forward to having those same moments with our family. With a family of our own in the future. I will leave the statistics and study facts for the others. My email gives you our perspective and understanding of what. We have already seen and experienced in our short three years of living on Groveland. We hope the board votes with a resounding yes to support the rebuilding of the berm. If our schedules allow, we will do our best this evening to show additional support by attending the town hall meeting through Zoom. Lastly, I want to thank you all for the care and professionalism I have seen in all the hard decision making brought to your table. Stay safe and happy holidays, Romney and Jeanette. I have two more. Thank you for your continued service to our village and local government. It is sometimes a thankless job and we are grateful to those who step up and volunteer their time to keep our village safe and running smoothly. We are writing to ask for your support of the Groveland Berm Project. Our family moved to Riverside about five and a half years ago across from the river. We knew when purchasing our home that there was a possibility for flooding. And diligently purchased the FEMA insurance necessary to protect our home. What we didn't expect is that we'd experienced two flooding events in a short time here and for the FEMA insurance deductive, insurance to double. Both events were stressful and financially burdensome, but the latest one in May of twenty twenty was extremely worrisome. We were lucky enough to be spared the worst of the river's wrath that day. But in talking to the Army Corps of Engineers representative that was sent to inspect the area. We were informed that the current berm is already compromised and another event could further damage the safety net. Quit and quickly put our home underwater. I've been paying attention to the board discussions o, over this project and have found out. That the discussion and subsequent stalling due to a vocal minority has been going for quite some time and across. Different elected boards. My question is, if we have the opportunity to complete a project. That will help mitigate some of this stress and financial burden to our village, why shouldn't we pursue it? We can all see the effects of climate change and overdevelopment around the country as well as in Riverside. And we know that these heavy rainstorms are becoming more common. The longer we drag our feet on putting measures in place that will ease some of the destruction due to a changing climate. The more residents in Riverside will, as a whole, suffer. I sincerely ask for your consideration of our situation. And ask you to vote in favor of rebuilding of the Groveland Berm. Thank you for your time, Lisa and Peter Genon.
Hello, trustees. I wanted to send a note with my thoughts of the possible Army Corps project. To raise the Groveland Berm and extend barriers to the north and south. I'm in favor of moving forward with the next stages of the project to determine how it may be implemented. Obviously, I do not like the expected aesthetic impact of work. But in balance, I think that the reward for the community is great enough to accept that unfortunate cost. Also, for the greater good, I am willing, albeit reluctantly. To endure the many months of unearth pounding and construction required to execute the plan. I've lived on Groveland now for thirty years. My neighbor across the street is the Displanes River, so I've gotten to know this issue very well. My wife and I bought our house under the premise that the current berm had resolved, had solved flooding problems in the area. But alas, it did not. Because the project wasn't extended on each end of the Groveland block. The water merely comes around the ends of the berm. The current berm is effective, however, for many close calls that would have us underwater often. This new project would complete what was left uncompleted many years ago. Our first eighteen years here were flood free, but over the last decade, it seems that there are more and more close calls and flood events. Myself and my neighborhood seem to be enduring the hardship of floods at an increasing rate likely due to looming climate change. It is this increase in events that reinforces my opinion that this project must be seriously considered. The river I moved across from in nineteen ninety now exists in a very different macro hydrological. Or hydrologic system and will too in the future. In my rough estimate, there are about five hundred and fifty folks, around twenty five single homes. And twenty five multi resident structures in my vicinity whose safety and property are at risk with each effect. Also, at, at risk, of course, is the safety of our village's fantastic fire, police and public works professionals. Personally experiencing the two thousand eight and twenty thirteen major flood events, I can attest to the great hardship and costs. You and the Army Corps know the actual dollar cost of, for these floods. There also has been many close calls.
One just recently in May of this year that required days of preparation, pumping, and cleanup. Thank you for exploring this possible project further and for all of your diligent work on behalf on behalf here in Riverside. See you on the Zoom tomorrow. Best, Richard Rankin. That is it, sir. You're muted.
I do at least once every meeting, so.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Who is that?
My name is Chris. I live at eighteen West Avenue, and I am part of that vocal minority. And and I think we're considered a minority because we happen to live on West Avenue, which is a short block. And kudos to the the group that well coordinated all their their responses, and I understand everything you're saying and can appreciate what you're saying. And you have suffered losses. I'm very sorry for it. So have we. You have insurance that can cover some things that come up. I know you insurance doesn't cover it all, but you know what? There is no insurance that covers the destruction of our property values with that wall that is going to go in our yard. That is a benefit that we have of living close to railroad tracks that are very loud, that we can enjoy the beautiful river. And I would at least like to be acknowledged by the large group that lives on Groveland and Lincoln and so forth, that you are asking us to do a huge sacrifice about our homes and our properties. Many of us have lived here fifteen years or more. Consider that, please. When you're deciding to vote on this, what's going to happen to us? We're a we're a short street with just a few people on it. What is it, maybe ten structures on this block? Our property values will be ruined, the many hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have all used to buy our houses over the years. Think about that. That's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Other comments from anyone? Before we wrap up public comment? Going once, twice. Okay, thank you, everyone, for for joining us on our Zoom tonight. We're gonna.
I apologize, President Sells. I did get a message saying from Michelle Ritma, saying she sent an email to the village manager and didn't hear it read aloud.
I don't. Did she send it just to manager Francis? Because I don't recall getting anything from Ms. Ritma.
I thought I saw it in the package that you sent, Jessica.
I believe it is one of the ones that I forwarded to everyone.
Let's take a moment while manager Francis takes a look. It's just overlooked.
Kathy said it was in the, do you have it readily available, Kathy, where you can read it? I'm not finding it.
I do have it. I can read it.
Thank you.
It says, to whom it may concern, I want to reach out regarding the upcoming board meeting specifically in regards to the presentation by the Army Corps of Engineers for the Groveland Avenue Levy Project. It is with utmost concern that I urge you and the fellow trustees slash board members to vote yes to approve the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to proceed with the Groveland Avenue Levy Project. We moved to our beautiful home at ninety-one Groveland Avenue in Riverside in September of two thousand and twelve from the city in hopes of raising our family in our forever home. We were attracted to the area due to the proximity to the city as well as the relative safety and sense of community Riverside has to offer. Shortly after moving, we experienced the flood in April twenty thirteen. It was an extremely traumatic experience, and it has forever changed our lives. We had to replace our entire first main floor due to the flooding damage while also trying to raise a five-month-old child. As you can imagine, there was quite a large cost to replace the material things with the sense of safety that we lost, and the constant foreboding every time it rains has never gone away. While we've since implemented mitigation measures, we are very aware of the potential for this to happen again unless the city joins us in choosing options to help lessen the damage, both physically to the properties in the area as well as mentally to the residents that have to deal with the fallout each time the floodwaters rise. I ask that you please consider our family and the families like us that look to move into the downtown area of Riverside for their home and approve the vote for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to proceed with their levy project on Groveland. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Michelle Re- Man- Ri- Ritma, ninety-one Groveland Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, hearing nothing further? Don't think. Right? Okay, so we'll close public comment, and we'll move on with the remainder of of our agenda. Next up is the president's report. The only thing I have for you this evening is an application for a liquor license. On November first of this year, we received a liquor license application from Gisela Munoz on behalf of Katrina Bar, Inc. at thirty-four East Avenue in Riverside. They are asking for a Class E restaurant license, which is mixed drinks, which will allow them to serve alcohol in addition to beer and wine for consumption on the premises when provided this part of food service. They have submitted the required documents, and staff is reviewing them. A final, the the application is always contingent upon submitting fingerprints and having a completed background investigation. So staff is recommending approval. So I would ask for a motion and a second to approve an ordinance authorizing issuance of a Class E restaurant liquor license to Katrina Bar, Inc.
I want to make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second by.
Second.
Ms. Collins, any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
The motion carries. That's all I have for this evening, manager Francis.
I do not have a report this evening.
We'll move on then to the approval of the consent agenda. It is a fairly lengthy one, so bear with me here. Item T, as in Tango, has been asked to be removed by one of the trustees, so that will not be part of the consent agenda. So on the agenda this evening is to ratify the voucher list of bills for November nineteen, twenty twenty, voucher list of bills for December three, twenty twenty, to approve the Village Board of Trustees twenty twenty tax levy public hearing, and twenty twenty-one budget public hearing minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty, to approve the Village Board trustees' regular meeting minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty, and to file and review the following Economic Development Commission regular meeting minutes, September ten, twenty twenty, Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing minutes of September twenty-three, twenty twenty, Police Pension Board meeting minutes of August twenty-four, twenty twenty, and Disability Hearing Minutes of September twenty-four, twenty twenty, the Community Development Finance, Fire, Police, and Public Work Departments' October monthly reports, the Village of Riverside Police Pension Fund Municipal Compliance Report for twenty nineteen, and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty property tax levies for the twenty twenty-one collection for the Village of Riverside and Riverside Public Library, ordinance is adopting the annual budget of the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library for the year commencing January one, twenty twenty-one, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and ordinance abating the tax here to levy for the year twenty twenty to pay the principal and interest on two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation refunding bonds, alternative revenue source, series twenty ten A of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, and ordinance abating the tax here to levy for the year twenty twenty to pay the principal and interest in two million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars G O refunding bonds, alternate alternative revenue source for water system, series twenty eleven of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, a resolution directing the reduction of the twenty twenty property tax levies by the Cook County Tax Extension Office, if necessary, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into various purchase orders, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Christie Weber and Company, or not to exceed amount of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-one Central Business District planter bed maintenance, a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract renewal and issue a purchase order to D. Ryan Tree and Landscape Service, or not to exceed amount of forty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one cyclic tree trimming services, a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract renewal and issue a purchase order to D. Ryan Tree and Landscape Service, for not to exceed amount of forty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one tree and stump removal and emergency storm damage response, a resolution amending section two thirteen and two fourteen of the Village River of Riverside Employee Manual Relative to Work Week Definition, and a motion to approve the special event application for holiday hello with Santa to be held on Saturday, December twelfth, twenty twenty. I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Motion. Second by.
Second.
Ms. Collins, please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
The motion carries. The item removed is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of municipal services associates or wireless facilities plan review services. I believe, Mr. Hannan, you had some questions on that issue.
Just looking for some background on the purpose of of the contract.
I'll handle that, President Sells. So if the board recalls, in twenty eighteen, the village adopted a small cell ordinance to establish standards related to design permitting, location, and construction of small wireless facilities, also known as small cells. And there was a zoning code modification with regard to placement of smalls- small wireless facilities. And with regard to small cells, the village does not have any pending applications. However, this is our proactive approach that should we get any of those applications? While Director Apt and Director Tab can review it for certain village requirements as it relates to making sure that aesthetically it matches our different designs and other poles that we have within the village and setbacks are required and whether different concealment and things of that sort. Looking at it from the technical perspective would be what municipal services associates would handle. They would make sure that it would be completed within the timeframe that is required statutorily, and they would be able to give it that additional technical review that we do not have the expertise in-house. As I said, I don't anticipate, we haven't received any yet. However, I do want to have the availability of this consultant should we need to utilize his expertise in the future.
Great, that that's very helpful and answers my questions.
So without ask for a motion, a second to approve the resolution.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Evans, second by Mr. Gallegos. Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on now to reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to, we do have a presentation this evening by the Landscape Advisory Commission Chairperson Kathy Maloney about major activities for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Chairperson Maloney.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for letting me just give this brief report. You did have a copy of the report, I believe, in your materials. So I'll just hit the highlights. It's all good news. So it's been a very different year, as you know, but I think that the nature that Frank Frederick W. Olmstead embedded into Riverside's design has helped many of us get through this year, as many of, oh, Olmstead himself was the executive secretary of the Sanitary Commission in the Civil War, and was therefore very familiar with infectious diseases and helped develop the philosophy that to cure both physical and mental health, one needed a lot of nature. So that is the the effort of the Landscape Advisory Commission. And in the past year and year or two, we've been trying to do just that, is to preserve and steward the beautiful landscape that Frederick W. Olmstead designed for us and encourage residents and visitors alike to enjoy it. So we have two major charges in the in our in our charter, and that is to develop and preserve a man- master landscape plan. That plan was developed in twenty fifteen and approved by the board, and then periodically on a cycle of about three to five years, we look at the public green spaces throughout Riverside and compare it to what was described as the ideal situation in the master landscape plan. So this year, and last, the areas that we decided to look at are what we call the signature triangles in Riverside, which were essentially the major triangles that you see upon entering the village. So it's kind of the first image that you get of Riverside through all the entrance ways that come into our village. And essentially, and you'll see the results are attached at the end of this plan, we had, you know, very good news, we just can't compliment enough, the Public Works Department and the Forestry Department for the work that they do. Those triangles that we did have some issues with were mostly issues regarding invasive plants. And this is not something that the Forestry Department typically has enough staff to look at on an ongoing basis. This is the ground level, the abrasious level of plants. And so we have been working with the Forestry Department to identify those triangles that have a lot of invasives and are trying to find volunteer workdays or scout projects who want to take that on. But overall, the assessment of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty was very good on those signature triangles. Our second major charge is in education and outreach. We were able to work with two major scout projects. Our commissioner, Lisa Lambros, did that, heads up that area. One of the projects was to augment some of the tags that are on the Arboretum in Guthrie Park, and another one was to do some planting and invasive removal with the Girl Scouts along the riverbank. So we're always open to volunteer groups like the Scouts whenever they have Eagle Projects or Silver Awards to do, and Lisa is very helpful in guiding that. Another project that we took on, and I should mention that some of these projects were augmented financially by a green grant that was awarded two years ago that we, one or two years ago, I don't quite remember, that we worked with Public Works to secure. And part of the reason that I'm presenting this today is I want to give acknowledgement to Open Lands and Commonwealth Edison for funding this. It was about six, six, six thousand four hundred dollars in total. And one of the projects that we did was create backpacks that are housed in the Riverside Public Library, and these are projects for both, they can be checked out, they're for both adults and for younger family members. They have to do with designing your own garden, so there's a They have to do with designing your own garden, so there's little toolkits where you can model your own garden. There's one that teaches how to actually do community design and another backpack about nature journaling. There's 12 backpacks in all. And we're delighted that the library has agreed to house those for us. We did have plans to have some events around that, 2020 precluded that, but we're looking forward to doing that next year. Picnic like it's 1869 Commissioners Lauren Cody and Julie Shave have been running that again this year, we could not do it, but the essence of that is it's held on Swan Pond Bluff. And it's completely recyclable, if you will. You choose your lunch, you bring your own lunch, as you might have in 1869, with no plastics, no anything that would need to be caused waste is not encouraged. And a lot of people have come in the past, and we hope to do that again this year. We created with the help of Gail McKernan, who's a resident in town, three posters, Trees of Riverside, Birds of Riverside, and Wildflowers of Riverside. And we have been giving those out as prizes for the various contests that we've held throughout the past year with photo contests and so forth. The images on those photographs are all done by Riverside photographers, amateur and professional, and are all taken in Riverside. So we have a number of those posters remaining that we will be giving out in this coming year, hopefully when people are able to get together much more so than they were last year. The Arboretum Commissioner Dave Rubin has been working with the Village Forester and our contractor with GIS to solidify and enhance the data that you can see now on the interactive map on the village's website. All the data has been updated, and we are in the process of updating some images as well. In terms of the Arboretum, Commissioner Mary Pankett has worked to create a docent manual. We have training now for other people who want to be docents of the Arboretum. And we will be including some additional tours this year, again, when we can get people together outside. So we're looking forward to that. We obtained with the use of the green grant money as well as some individual donors in Riverside, a binocular viewer, the sort of thing that you might see if you were to go to a state park and look over the landscape and so forth. You can see a picture of it in the packet that I gave. And that viewer will be positioned in the library so that you can look at some of these wildlife, be it a bird or a plant or whatever along the river. And the library has agreed to install that in the, I always forget the name of it, but it's that beautiful patio that's on the main floor that's glass enclosed, quiet reading room. And we'll have a little document along with that so people can know what they're looking for. Two other quick things. Swan Pond, part of the green grant money went to maintaining Swan Pond. You may recall that that was a project that the Landscape Advisory Commission was involved with, along with many volunteers throughout the village, to try to figure out what plantings would work in this new environment that we're in that constantly floods or has drought or whatever. And a key element of that, which we knew from the beginning, was that that needed to be maintained. So that's an area that we hope the village will keep its eye on, and we will keep our eye on it as well to see how those plantings are doing and to see what we can do for the South End as well. And then lastly, we will be updating a homeowner landscape booklet that will describe different ways that you can work with your landscape to make it eco-friendly as well as beautiful. And to give homeowners an appreciation of what the intent is for the public landscapes in Riverside. And with the help of Riverside TV, we're also putting together a video of topics like that. And that video, as well as the booklet, should be coming out in January or February of next year. So that's what we've been doing. Again, we've been trying to encourage people. They do, of course, appreciate the nature. We're just trying to give an extra ways that people can enjoy it. And very open to any suggestions you have of how we can enhance some of the materials that we've created or anything that we do as a commission. Thank you for listening and take any questions if you have it.
Any questions for Ms. Maloney?
I actually have one. Do you guys have any information in the pamphlets about type of landscape that might help attract birds to your yard?
Sure, bird friendly, yep. That would be in the pamphlet that we're going to put out in January.
Okay, thanks. Those as a resident, not as a trustee.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you were asking that for Valerie, that's what I think.
I was, but she's hooked, I'm hooked.
Any other questions? Well, Ms. Maloney, thank you. Your mission has just been exceeding, just a second. You've just been doing wonderful work. I've heard so many compliments about how Swan Pond looks. Every year, it gets closer and closer to being, you know, what it was and being the natural place that it was really intended to be. And under your leadership, your commission is really thriving, and we really appreciate what you are all doing.
Thank you, it's a great team. And thank all of you for letting us do our thing.
Mr. Pollock, you had something?
I was just going to say the thing you just said, Ben. I threw that report, and I was so impressed and so pleased with what I read. To see this mission, which is so important to the Village of Riverside, doing the kind of tremendous work that they're doing, really, really made me feel really good about being involved in Riverside Village Government, to see volunteers stepping forward, doing great work for our village. So I wanted to express my gratitude and thanks to the Landscape Advisory Commission.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Ms. Maloney, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy.
So we'll move on now to ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution authorizing the dissolution of the West Suburban Mass Transit District. Ms. Frances, are you going to do this one?
Yes. I just want to give you a little bit of background. In 1972, the West Suburban Mass Transit District was created. The district included the following communities: Berwin, Brookfield, Claritin Hills, Hinsdale, La Grange, Lyle, Naperville, Riverside, Western Springs, and Wesma. Since its creation, the district has provided funding for improvements in member communities. The district has committed all of their available funding to projects within member communities, and there are no future funding sources for the district. On October 21st, 2020, the district unanimously approved the resolution of dissolution. The district has requested that each member approve the resolution authorizing the dissolution. The district will provide a final grant in the amount of $6,500 to member communities. I wanted to make note that the Village of Riverside has received over $720,000 from the district over the past seven years. The village would like to thank Riverside resident and district trustee, Jason T. Johns, and previous district trustees from Riverside for their work and commitment to the district and the village over the years. I do want to note that Mr. Johns is also in the Zoom meeting. If the board has any questions with regards to the dissolving of the West Suburban Mass Transit District.
Questions, anyone? Ms. Pollock?
Had a question for staff. I'm just curious, where did the funding for this come from?
For the creation of it, I believe Mr. Johns is a little bit more first on the subject matter. But from what I am aware, there were cars that were purchased and then leased out and ultimately sold. And that is where the revenue came from. But I'm sure Mr. Johns could provide some additional history as it relates to that, if you'd like.
If you'd like, I'd be happy to. The district was originally created as part of a public-private partnership for federal funding with the Burlington Northern. And Burlington Northern donated cars, and then the federal government contributed money. Over the years, the district actually owned the cars, the commuter, the cars and the the locomotives that ran the BNSF Metro line and leased them back to Metro, who then had a service agreement with, excuse me, leased them back to Burlington Northern, who then had a service agreement with Metro. Over the years, I think it was in early 2000s, they sold the locomotives, and then I think it was about four years ago, we sold the last of our cars, and we actually sold them to Metro. So there's no more cars left, and there's no more, you know, sources of funding available other than creating, instituting a tax, which all of the member communities would need to improve. So instead of that, figured it's just time to dissolve the district.
Thank you, thank you for your time volunteering for.
Certainly, welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Johns, we really do appreciate that you're representing the village in the district for these years.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Happy to bring the funding to the village.
We were happy to have you bring. So I'd ask for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the dissolution of the West Suburban Mass Transit District.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pollock, I think I heard. Second by Mr. Gallegos. Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is under considerations is a discussion of the 2021 Economic Incentive Program for Riverside Businesses. Director Apt, are you going to handle this one?
Yes. So back when we had our initial CIP discussion, staff had asked the village board if they were interested in establishing a fund for economic incentives for 2021. And at that time, the board asked that the EDC take a look and provide some input on what these incentives could be and possibly a dollar amount. So at their last couple of meetings, the commission has been discussing a possible incentive program for the businesses. They recommended postponing the First Avenue Gateway sign and utilizing that money for an economic incentive program for the businesses. The budget for that sign included in the 2021 budget is $8,000. The commission has suggested an incentive program utilizing specific criteria to evaluate applications and award grant money based on either budget restrictions or a 50-50 split, and basically recommended an economic incentive program that would be for businesses that are located in our business districts, so either in the downtown or in the B1 districts, that they are existing businesses, that they must be a retail, food service, or personal service establishment, and that the expense may not be made until after the applications are reviewed and approved. Eligible applicants would receive up to a 50% of verified qualified expenditures rebate, and all requests need to be submitted to the village for review and recommendation by the Economic Development Commission. The criteria that was looked at and decided upon would be, first, the total budget for the project, then looking at, will the project allow the business to operate during COVID pandemic? Will the project better position the business to operate and succeed during COVID and post-COVID? What's the aesthetic impact, such as the location or the magnitude of the improvement? Looking at consistency with our CMAP, Central Business District Plan, or our business district plans that we have for the three business districts that we've enacted, a demonstrated financial capability of the applicant, and also funding availability and feasibility. The commission believed this program would show the village's commitment to its business community, especially during this difficult time, and stated it was important to roll the program out at the beginning of the year so that it could provide a quick response to our local businesses as they're trying to survive and adapt in the current pandemic, especially with the institution of Tier 2 and Tier 3 mitigation in Cook County. The commission also wanted to keep the program somewhat flexible and not create an individual grant maximum. Given the limited budget and the low number of grant applicants the village has received in the past for other programs that we've offered, they believed reviewing the applications by merit and working with the 50% maximum refund within the budget would be sufficient. I'd also like to mention that in 2020, the board did provide some economic relief, although it wasn't necessarily an incentive package, with waiving our liquor license fees for our businesses, and so that's effective through April of 2021. And then also with waiving the fees for the outdoor dining permits this year. This time, the village is also about to send out our business license renewal forms. And so there are business license fees that will be coming due soon for our businesses as well. I don't necessarily know if that's something that the village board is interested, but that is another option for providing some sort of economic relief for our businesses at this time is looking at business license fees. So at this point, staff is looking for direction from the village board on whether we should create a resolution adopting this new proposed economic incentive program for our businesses for 2021, and if there's any further discussion regarding the business license renewals.
So I have an initial question before I throw it to everyone else. The business license fees, how are the fees calculated? Is it a flat fee that businesses pay?
Yes, it's a flat $100 fee. There are additional fees that are required based on the business type. So like for our restaurants, they have to pay additional fees for the health inspections.
Is that the only one other one you can think of is the health inspection?
I believe there's also additional fees for things like fuel pumps for our fueling stations. And then also, I believe, tobacco licenses have additional fees that are involved.
Okay, so trustees, what do you think? Would you like the staff to move forward with drafting a resolution, putting some of these incentives into place? Mr. Gallegos?
Yes, I would, absolutely. I'd also like to have a financial breakdown of what the liquor licenses and business license fees would be, so we can see if we can waive any of those. If that's a possibility. I know budgets will be tight, but I'd like to see a breakdown of that at the next meeting as well, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I'm very supportive of this. It's a really thoughtful effort by the EDC. I just wanted to find out why the Harlem Business Districts weren't included. I don't remember what was said. Do you?
So it's in the downtown or in our B1 district, which is the Harlem Avenue Business Districts. So it includes.
Oh, okay.
It seems, looks to me like we have a consensus that we'd like to move forward with this. Okay. Yeah, thank you to the EDC, yet another one of our commissions that's doing stellar work behind the scenes. We're really grateful for everything they do. Is that all you needed from us, Ms. Apt?
Yes, we'll put together the resolution with the new policy, and then we'll bring you back some numbers regarding the fees. I do know that we get approximately $8,000 annually for business license fees, but I don't have the numbers for the liquor license fees.
I mean, my personal opinion is during, as long as we're under the mitigations that we're under, I would like to try to do everything we can to help our businesses and especially our restaurants, because they're really struggling right now.
Our liquor licenses run through April 30th, so it could be something that we revisit in the spring prior to the renewal period and see where we're at at that time.
Yeah, let's hope some of the good news we're starting to hear about the vaccines might might take effect by then, and maybe, God willing, by April or May, maybe we'll all be going out to eat again. That would be nice. Ms. Evans?
Um, yeah, do we know how long it will take to develop the application and roll it out?
It shouldn't take too long. It shouldn't take too long. Once, as we're putting together the resolution, we'll also put together the application. We've had one we created for the facade grant program, so that can be pretty easily adapted for this.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any new business this evening? Hearing none, we do have need for an executive session this evening for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, the purchase of real property for the use of the public body, and pending probable or imminent litigation. So I'd ask for a motion, a second, to adjourn to executive session to reconvene, and no final action will be taken.
I'll make that motion.
And Mr. Gallegos?
My second.
Second by Ms. Evans. Mr. Maloney, did you have anything else at the end you needed to say?
Yes, I did have one thing. Thank you, President Sells. We can do this very quickly, so it's important, under the Open Meetings Act amendments, for these virtual meetings that continue to occur, that everyone acknowledge that they were able to hear everything that occurred during the meeting, both as to being able to hear each other for those who are voting members, and to have been able to have heard all the discussion by any third parties, including me. So we can do this. Last time I went around one by one. If everyone can just raise your hand and acknowledge that you've been able to hear and understand, and I think the recording also will bear that out. So it's pretty good. It went very well. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, President Sells.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. If you'll please call the roll for adjournment.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hanon.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone, and take care of one another.